Christopher Constant here. We will be getting started shortly. Desiree, yeah, are we recording you? We are good. So it looks like we have enough members here to dive in. So I'm going to call the January 21, 2021, meeting of the Assembly Enterprise and Utility Oversight Committee to order, and we will get started. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Ms. Allard. Mr. Constant.
Here.
Mr. Dunbar.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Ms. LaFrance. Ms. LaFrance. I see she tried, but she's on mute, I think. Mr. Peterson. Mr. Perezverdia. Mr. Rivera.
Is it?
Mr. Waddleton.
Waddleton is here.
And Ms. Zalatell.
Here.
You have a quorum. And Ms. LaFrance says in the chat that she's here.
Okay, thank you. I do see that she's present. And so today on the agenda, we have a new briefing on the 301H permit renewal for AWU Asplund Water Waste Water Treatment Facility, and then a brief update on the stormwater utility. We may or may not have discussions about legislative priorities. Anything else to add to the agenda? Not hearing anything, then I will go ahead and hand this over to Mr. Corsatino.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen for the presentation. Can you hear me, by the way?
Just fine.
Okay, excellent. And then now can you see my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good morning, members of the Assembly. Mark Corsatino, I'm the General Manager of AWU. And today's topic is, as on the agenda, Asplund Waste Water Treatment Facility and PDS 301H permanent reapplication status. I've got about 30 slides, which is a lot for me, and I talk fast, and there's a lot of information here. So the intent is to go through these fairly quickly, but save some time at the end for questions and comments. The intent of this presentation is really educational, informational. This is a highly consequential permit reapplication process for the community from a financial perspective and an environmental perspective as well. And it's important that you members know this because your constituents may have questions on it. It's somewhat of a complex topic. It's an old topic, but it's really making sure you have the information you need to be able to answer questions and get the resources you need if you have questions. So with that, what I'm going to give you today is a location overview and history of the facility, a history of the permit and associated regulations that go along with it, providing an overview of the treatment process. And in that matter, if there's ever, when the COVID pandemic hopefully wanes itself away, and we get back to some sort of normalcy, I'd love to invite any of you out to the plant at any given time. It's a really good process plan to see if you haven't seen it, but right now we've got it kind of in lockdown for nonessential folks just because we want to protect our limited resources of operators that we have to provide treatment processes. But the extension is there when and if this pandemic goes away. We do want to present the current permit requirements and how we comply with them, explain the consequences of the permit loss, and then summarize just where we're at with the permanent reapplication plans and the schedule. Ultimately, like I said, is to provide you with information to assist you with questions you may have from your constituents. As the title even alludes to, there's a lot of names and acronyms that may or may not be familiar to some of you. So I've tried to highlight some of them here. The first three, Waste Water Treatment Facility, Water Pollution Control Facility, and Publicly Owned Treatment Works are all synonymous with one another. They're all waste water treatment plants. They're just in different regulations. The nomenclature is slightly different. Now, BOD, biochemical oxygen demand, and TSS, total suspended solids, those are important parameters. And those are the two quantitative parameters that really dictate and define what the distinction is between primary and secondary treatment. So we'll get into that later, but those are important terminologies. Those are the two specific parameters that really are defined to distinguish those two, as I said. MGD is million gallons of day, which is the amount of water we treat. You know, it's just the units used. Primary treatment and secondary treatment. As I said, BOD and TSS are really the distinguishers between those definitions. But what I'm, in this case, primary treatment is what Asplund has, and secondary treatment is what would, just showing that if we had to go to secondary, because we lost the permit, which would be just, it would be required, the cost of that's about a billion dollars to the community. AWU is the stake, the rate payers in the community at large. Endangered Species Act is just what, the fact that Cook-in-at-the-Blue-of-Wales became endangered, and it's threw a little wrench in the permanent reapplication process, and of course, the Clean Water Act, which is really what governs this whole permit. And anyway, so where is Asplund? It is located at the end of Hudson Drive, past, at Point Warren's Off, past, on Hudson Drive, past the Point Warren's Off Park overlook, past the airport. It's on the, kind of at the northwest terminus of the north-south runway. Adjacent to the coastal trail. The coastal trail actually surrounds it on two sides, with the ocean on the other and the park on the north side. And then, what's important is it does collect and treat all the wastewater from the Anchorage Bowl. Over 750 miles of buried sewer collection system conveys its water to Anchorage, which is Asplund Waste Water Treatment Facility. On this map, it's kind of all the green lines shown here. Those are the big trucks and interceptors, but then all the small lines that convey the wastewater, generally by gravity, but also by pump stations to that location. Prior to that, it was, well, I'll get to the next slide where it went to. But of note, it's also worth noting that Eagle River and Gerwood have two separate wastewater treatment facilities. They're not connected to the system. However, we do take the sludge from those facilities to Asplund at the end incinerated. So further dry process and incinerate it. Kind of an aerial overview of what the plant looks like. The big, six big circles are clarifiers or sedimentation facilities where a lot of the clarification and treatment process occurs to clean the water. Smaller clarifiers then concentrate and thicken the sludge where it goes for drying and ultimate incineration in this building. Also, the inworks, headworks here where the screens occur, and there's a lot of other processes in here. But ultimately, when the water is cleaned, it does go for disinfection in this facility and out to the inlet later downstream, which I'll show in a few other slides, subsequent slides. But what's important to note in this slide on that last bullet is not only do we take water just from the Anchorage Bowl and even portions from the treatment plants, Eagle River and Gerwood, but we also take all the onsite waste streams from the entire south-central region, from Matsia Borough, Anchorage, Hillside, Eagle River Northern Communities, and the Canadian Peninsula Borough. So in other words, we are basically a regional treatment facility because all the septic systems that do get pumped out are discharged to our collection system and treated at Asplund. All right, so the history. The facility started operations in 72. Obviously, construction started before then, but it was fully in line in 72. Prior to that, we were discharging raw suits to the ocean in multiple outfall locations such as Chester Creek, Campbell Creek, and Ship Creek. All had buried pipes that discharged raw suits to the ocean. But Mayor John Asplund, who was a tireless advocate for wastewater treatment, got this rolling in 72. The plant was upgraded to a larger capacity and to 58 million gallons per day of treatment capacity in 89, anticipating maybe failed hillside systems, the oil boom, growth, populations, and all that stuff came to fruition. So we are operating at about 30 million gallons a day right now, which actually gives us, helps us because we get a lot better treatment with that, with that flow range. Congress added the clean water. So the 301H primary treatment standards were not allowed until 77, even though the Clean Water Act first went into place in 72. I'll get into the history of that in the next slide. But it was added in 77. We applied for that permit immediately and received it in 85. We reauthorized with that permit, even though they're five-year permits, we file for timely reapplications. The EPA can take a long time to act on this permit. So we got another reauthorized permit in 2000. We reapplied for the permit five years later, timely in 2005, and the EPA has yet to act on that. So we weren't an administrative extension and have been for 15, 20 years. It is the largest wastewater plant in Alaska, and it has an extensive marine monitoring program, which is required as part of the permit, which has shown no adverse environmental impacts. And we'll get into all that in the subsequent slides. But first and foremost, what is the Clean Water Act and what governs this, our discharge permit? All wastewater discharges to water bodies in the United States are permitted under EPA's NPDS program, which was created in the 1972 Federal Water Pollution Control Act amendments, also known as the Clean Water Act. And the Clean Water Act goals of 72, the philosophical goals, which are still alive and well today, the goal is very important to restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the nation's waters for water quality, to provide for protection, propagation of fish, shellfish, and wildlife, and provide for recreation and on the water. Those goals are extremely important, and we make sure we meet those. It still exists today, and it's how you do that, which is really important when it comes to permitting. Because prior to then, there's, there is problems with pollution in water bodies in the US, so hence this came into place. So what they said in those 1972 Clean Water Act amendments, okay, if you want to, you want to meet those goals, those very important goals of restoring the water bodies in the US, you've got to do that by meeting secondary treatment standards, which redefine as 85% removal of BOD and TSS and 30 milligrams per liter of water, the concentration of that associated BOD and TSS. So there's really, those are the really the main parameters they use to define secondary treatment standards, and you needed to have that by 77. Of course, prior to 77, a lot of Congress and scientists and others argued, rightly so, that not all water bodies are the same. That's a pretty bold statement to say that that's going to make, meet the Clean Water Act goals just by removing 85% of BOD and TSS. There's a lot of other constituents and a lot, not all water bodies act the same with respect to the BOD and TSS. So what they did is they said with case-by-case circumstances and only for marine water discharges, you can apply for a waiver of the secondary treatment requirements for BOD and TS alone, just those two specific constituents, if you can show you can meet the Clean Water Act goals without secondary treatment requirements. And, and a lot of facilities around the United States applied for them. Many of them got them, many did not. There's only about, there's less than 100 left in the United States. Nine of them are in Alaska, and we'll go over that a little bit later, and we're one of them. The 301H permit requirements require that these wastewater plants, POTWs, they do need immediately these primary treatment standards, which is defined as 30% removal oncoming BOD and TSS, and the limits are of TSS and BOD are a little higher than the 30/30 on the secondary standards. And the three, and this is critical. The last one is really the most critical stuff in my mind. The 301H permit is must meet the Clean Water Act goals by meeting nine criteria set forth in the Clean Water Act section 301H. And those nine criteria show that you can adhere to and meet those Clean Water Act goals because there's a lot of other constituents and pollutants other than BOD and TSS. But because BOD and TSS are really, is the defining parameter for the distinction between primary and secondary treatment, why? What's so important about these two parameters? And it really gets down to aquatic wildlife and restoration of the nation's water bodies. Dissolved oxygen is a critical feature for a healthy ecosystem and water bodies in the United, and any water body, to be frank. You have aquatic wildlife, much of it has to have dissolved oxygen. BOD is biochemical oxygen demand, and TSS is the solids, total suspended solids. Both of those exert an oxygen demand and diminish the dissolved oxygen, which in result can kill aquatic wildlife and make it unsustainable for their habitats. Hence, those are reasons why it's so important that those BOD and TSS limits are controlled because that's what the nation was seeing when we were allowing pollution, is just dead zones in water bodies, dead lakes, dead rivers. The trick, though, is what the argument has been made that in large water, receiving waters such as oceans, and particularly Cook-in-at-the-Blue-of-Wales, a classic example, if we get to the next slide, of, of why that's not necessarily the case, why it's not necessarily important, because BOD and TSS have almost no impact on the receiving water, and that's what we'll show in a minute here. But, but before we get there, what is primary treatment? And kind of a high-level overview, the primary treatment process involves screenings, which removes all the trash and debris that come into the plant, and that is collected and then eventually taken to the landfill. We settle out all the solids and clarify the clean water, and all the solids are settled out, thickened, dried, and then incinerated. And then the ash is also taken out of landfill. And then finally, we disinfect the water to make sure it's pathogen, mostly pathogen-free. Or, you know, there's always going to be microbiology in the water, and that's, and some microbiology is good, some is not. But the intent is to kill the worst pathogens that can hurt and harm aquatic wildlife before it's discharged into Cook-in-at-the-Blue-of-Wales. At a little more in-depth scale, when and if you come to the plant, you'll see this in depth, but here's a quick overview. All the raw suits comes in from a large eight-foot diameter burial tunnel that goes under the runway and from all of Anchorage, quite frankly. It then goes into three tall screens, which, these are two-story tall screens, they're very large. Two are operated at any given time. One's kind of a redundant feature for high flows, it could be, high flows, it could be used. And then also grits removed. There's these venturi grit chambers that allow solids, additional solids that pass through the screening to get settled out as well. It always amazed me, how in the world cricket's in the wastewater? I guess maybe kids eat dirt and mud, but who knows? And then from there, the solids, the water is then sent to our, our clarifiers or sedimentation basins where the water is clarified. The solid settle to the bottom, the fats, oils, and greases, which is fog, is floated to the top, and the solids are then taken and, like I said, thickened and dried, and then incinerated along with the fog, which is concentrated and removed, concentrated, and also sent to the incinerator as a good fuel source. And then that clarified water goes over those clarifiers as effluent, and it's disinfected with hypochlorite, and then it's eventually discharged out to the ocean, 800 feet offshore in here. And there's a little beach tower here that's often familiar with a lot of folks because it's the graffiti-ridden regular basis tower out there that is used because in this process, it backs up the water so it gets appropriate chlorine contact time, which does do the disinfection process to make sure it's safe for the discharge. All right, so going back to what's, what's so important about now and why about this 301H permit? As I said earlier, only select utilities that are publicly owned treatment works, wastewater plants in the United States, wherever given these in the first place. As I said, it happens to be that about nine of them are in Alaska because obviously we have a lot of oceanfront and communities. And our Anchorage is the largest, and what the EPA told us all, back in January of 2020, right before COVID hit, that they're going to start getting all these little permits out of administrative extension and go through the reapplication process finally after, because they've all been on administrative extension like us for 10, 15, 20 years. Now, the trick about these 301H permits, unlike a lot of other permits like our Eagle River and Gerwood permits, EPA is giving primacy to the ADEC Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for the NPDS permit process for all of our wastewater plants, with the exception of the 301H facilities. Only EPA can modify or reissue those permits. ADC cannot do that. So they have to do with all the Alaska communities that have these. And like I said, AWU is the largest and the last that they said they're going to look at because ours is larger, it's more complex, and so they're going to wait. But they did make it very clear that this is EPA Region 10. They put in writing several times. Their, their goal is, and they're committed to their goal of reducing its backlog of administrative continued permits by September of 2022, so about a year and a half from now. And that, there's a lot of work to do between now and then if that actually comes to fruition, which we have no reason to believe it won't. So as I said earlier, in order to prove and ensure that we're meeting the Clean Water Act goals, the 301H set forth nine criteria to qualify for the 301H permit. And I've listed them here. I'll just list them up. The next subsequent nine or so slides kind of goes into these in a little more detail. And obviously, you're not going to be able to digest all this now, but I want to give at least a high, high-level overview. You have to have a balanced indigenous population in the, in the receiving water. You do have to have an environmental monitoring program. You can't constrain the discharges. And really important is you have to, you know, this is really what, in my mind, is the meat of this, is you still have to meet water quality standards, state water quality standards, for all the other pollutants other than BOD and TSS. I mean, it's metals, diesel range organics, there's all kinds of other toxic pollutants, and you've got to make sure you meet your water quality standards, regardless of BOD and TSS. And in order to do that, there's pre-treatment requirements that are done. They have to be enforced. You have to have one, and you want to control toxics from non-industrial sources so you can meet those water quality standards. You do need to meet those NPDS permit limits, which is the BOD and TSS requirements for 30% removal on the effluent limitations they've given us on those. So like I said, these next several slides just kind of give an overview of how we meet those permit requirements and those nine criteria. As you said earlier, only ocean outfalls with large tides and currents are really eligible for this because they can, the waste stream, if it's low enough, can assimilate, easily assimilate those waste streams. As a matter of fact, when you look at BOD and TSS alone, for instance, the dissolved oxygen in our outfall is just the same as the rest of the inlet. It's very high. There's a lot of dissolved oxygen out there. Our BOD doesn't exert any demand. And then also, the TSS of our waste that we discharge is lower than the TSS out in the inlet itself. And, and then we have freshwater recharge, recharge from kinetic arm from the various sources on a regular basis. We meet our water quality standards, and it's, it's a good fit. It always has been. Furthermore, when you do look at just our BOD and TSS removal limits, remember, if you look at these bottom two in particular percent removals, remember, secondary is 85% removal, primary is 30% removal. We read, and this is, you know, 20-some years, actually 30, a long, this is a long list of data. But the point being is, for decades, and even to today, we've shown, at least on the TSS removal, we're only required to remove 30% of TSS. We're upwards of 80% on a regular basis, meaning we almost meet secondary standards for total suspended solids in a primary treatment plant. That's partly because we're oversized based on that 58 MGD capacity, but nevertheless, it helps us. Likewise, on BOD, we're only required to remove 30%. We remove in excess of 35% to 40%, 45% on a regular basis. So we exceed, we do a very, very good job on our treatment processes for BOD and TSS. We do have a pre-treatment program. It's a very important program. We have industrial discharge permit fees. We visit food service established, which is very important because one of the things that the permit is, the permits, EPA permit, put in their permit requirements is you have to control your sanitary sewer overflows. And one of the worst ways that sanitary sewer flows exists is by fats, oils, and greases in our smaller sewers. And I see John's got a question on the graph, and I'll save him to the end, but I'll, I'll be happy to pull him up again later. AW contributes, and this is another important feature, toxics. Remember, there's other pollutants other than BND and TSS. Toxics, we control, and we contribute a lot of money. If Spafford's online from Solid Waste, he knows this. We contribute several hundred thousand dollars a year to the municipal household hazardous waste collection program. In other words, we want those household hazardous waste not to go down the sewer, but to be collected appropriately and disposed appropriately through Solid Waste's program that we contribute a lot of money to. And of course, we have regular oversight reporting to the EPA Region 10 Pre-Treatment Coordinator. We do do annual environmental monitoring reports, which the Assembly sees them on a regular basis because it's kinetics, and we have like about 18 contract amendments because we need to have the same contractor for the life of the permit for consistency and defense when and if this permit is ever challenged. So they go out in the inlet every summer and take all kinds of water quality data parameters. It's expensive because, you know, they use boats, they take a lot of expensive samples. It's dangerous out there. It's specialized. You have PhDs analyzing this data on and on. But we do it every year, and it's an important feature of our program, and they're very good reports. If you ever want to read them, they're really good bedside reading. But the conclusions are pretty clear that we meet all permit conditions, our effluent yields are very, very low levels of trace contaminants. We meet our water quality standards. There's no toxicity, no bioaccumulation. I mean, it's, bottom line is we're very clean on our wastewater effluent. And more important, which is really important to us, and like a lot of utilities around the US, we are an award-winning operation. NAWWA gives these peak performance awards, which say, if you've got so many consecutive years of perfect, perfect, perfect permit compliance, meaning you don't have any notice of violations or discharge permit violations, you're, you're going to get noted and awarded. And there's not many utilities that get this, and we do it on a fairly regular basis. And, and also, what's really important is we continually reinvest in this facility because we need to. It's important, you know, like everything, it ages and deteriorates, and we need to keep it up, up to date and operational. So we spent since 85 over $64 million. We've got another $31 million planned, and it's to keep this thing running and operation and good improvements. It's very important to continue to do that. Obviously, here we look at the balanced indigenous population criteria. There's a little wrinkle thrown at the utilities and a lot of folks in 2008, when the Cook-in-at-the-Blue-of-Wales were put under, listed under the Endangered Species Act. So what we did is we said, okay, we need to make sure we're not contributing to anything that's going on with the bluegook whales. Because there is, so we did a biological evaluation that said, yeah, you know, there is certainly a risk of exposure to wastewater constituents that could harm the bluegook whales and the prey, so we need to study that. And so we did. We did the biological evaluation because we were concerned. Yeah, it's legitimate. It makes sense. They're in the same water bodies we're discharging, and it's very important to take a hard look at that. And what we shared through the, what we did through an extensive biological evaluation with sampling, additional sampling, modeling, a number of other things, is that over the, the conclusion at the end is there's no adverse impacts on bluegook whales associated with our discharge. We're such a small contributor, such low levels that our hazard coefficients for our parameters that we discharge, we meet all water quality standards are so low that it's, it's not an issue. That being said, this has not gone through the ESA consultation yet, and that's really where the, this, the important aspect comes into play when they go through the permanent reapplication process, EPA with their federal stakeholders. But, but, but just to play, you know, devil's advocate, what happens if our permit's not renewed? Well, we would no longer be eligible to receive a 301H permit. By default, we'd have to meet the 72 Clean Water Act standards of secondary treatment standards, which is the 85% removal of BOD and TSS. So we'd have to upgrade the plant, and that is at a huge price tag, about a billion dollars. These are the just estimates. And it would take place and land adjacent to the coastal trail, which would certainly reroute, make a permanent reroute of the section of the coastal trail because it would double the size of the plan as it is now, as far as, you know, more concrete basins for clarification, aeration, and so on and so forth. It'd be a big, huge impact on capital plus operational expenses, which would result in monthly residential bills. This is a ballpark estimate, but it'd be upwards of $100 per month in addition to what you're already paying. That could happen as early as 20, 30, or even sooner, keeping in mind that our current rates are about $50 a month on the sewer side only. Not, the combined rate's about 100 bucks a month for water sewer, but for sewer only, we're at about $50 a month residential. It would go to about $150 a month, you know, that $100 increase, a 200% increase. That's a huge impact to the community affordability. And, and what I mean by that is, this graph shows, the left graph first, EPA has an affordability metric. It's, what it says is, you don't want your annual water, combined water sewer build rates to be more than 4.5% of the median household income of your community. And in our state, the, you know, Anchorage's MHI is fairly high, you know, 88 grand in 2019. And so our, our rates are only 1.5% of that, our annual rates for that residential customer. So we're low, we're well-built, only 4.5. However, we tweak that for comparative purposes to see, okay, what happens to this affordability, if you will, if we are forced to go secondary. Taking out are the census tracts that are not covered in our sewer service area. You know, the Anchorage Hillside, which may have a higher median household income than some of the other areas in town and census tracts. If you take out areas like that and just focus in on the MHI for the different census tracts, what it shows is that about 12 to 13% of our customers have their, our rates are at or above 4.5% of their MHI, which is about, you know, you know, $29,000, $27 to $29,000 a year. If you're making that little money, then we're at 4.5 or higher percentage of your median household income. So it's not the appropriate use of this EPA affordability metric, but what I want to do is show you, if we're, if you use that, whether it's inappropriate or not, we're at 12% of that, customers are in that unaffordability metric now. If you go secondary because you have a billion-dollar increase in your plant expenses, that increases that affordability for the customers and the sewer customers in Anchorage from 13% to about 33%. So that's a 20% increase. That's a big, big increase on the community, and that's, that's, that's a concern, obviously. So in summary, really, like I said earlier, what we want to give you is really a status update on where we're at. As this kind of graph shows, EPA has put us on notice, and they're actively working on those southeast Alaska communities right now. They are going through the permanent reapplication process. They told us for last, they told us they want it done by end of 2022, so it's coming. But they've also told us, don't do anything. Well, I'll let you know when we need anything. In other words, we, what they've told us is this is their little process for the reapplication process. We've submitted a timely application back in 2005, and it's on them to move on that. We, they continue to get information from us because we do all these indoor reports, discharge monitoring reports, water quality reports, and so on and so forth. So it's been started for a long time. They need to, they need to act on that information and do an initial permit development. Then if they verify that we meet the criteria, the 301H criteria still, which we likely will, I think, I hope, then we need to go to ESA consultation, which is where a lot of this is going to get really interesting, and not a bad way. It's, it's, it's an appropriate process, but that's going to take a lot of time and probably additional studies and money, which is why we want to get moving sooner than later. So because of that, we believe their process with the EPA has taught in us, but we're also concerned about timeline. So what we are going to do is retain, get onboard a specialized legal counsel group who's familiar with EPA regulations and these types of permits, because there's a lot of them out there, to verify this actions. You can get really turned upside down and lose your permit just as much on a technicality as you can on any, whether or not you meet the criteria of the water quality criteria. If you do something wrong, you can get in trouble. If you don't meet deadlines, you can get in trouble. So we need some legal help to verify that we're not going to get in trouble based on the deadlines they're showing us and all the work that we know needs to get done, because there's years of work we think that's going to need to get done in order to help benefit and prove that. The biological evaluation was last done in 2010. It's, it took, it took a few years to get through all that information, and it's going to take several more years, I think, to do furthermore. And there's a lot of processes in between. So the point being is here is, I think at this point, I'll, I'll end this with saying, you know, we are committed to operating our facility to meet all the permit requirements and to protect, and to protect the marine environment, Cook inlet. You know, our goal and our mission statement is to safeguard the public health and the environment through our water and wastewater services, and this is one of the ways we do that. But I want you to be aware of this permit, what it's about, and if you have questions at this point, now's a good time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Corsatino. I want to note for the record, Ms. Allard joined us at 11:10. And first in the queue, we have Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark, thank you for this presentation. You know, there's been, this is a little bit, well, it's a little bit separate from the discussion around the permit because I don't think the, you know, the massive upgrade of Asplund is sort of realistic. But I was wondering, you know, there's been a lot of talk about an infrastructure bill at the federal But I was wondering, you know, there's been a lot of talk about an infrastructure bill at the federal level. It was one of the reasons that the administration asked us to fund a lobbyist in DC. It was so that Anchorage can hopefully get some projects funded through that bill if and when it materializes. And I'm wondering if there are any sort of shovel, I saw you had the thirty-one million dollars of investment that you wanted to do, but could you walk us through any potential shovel-ready projects at Asplund that might go into a federal infrastructure bill? Because sort of intuitively, to me, it seems like one of the most critical pieces of infrastructure that we should be asking to have repaired and upgraded. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, good question. We almost always have shovel-ready projects, not just at Asplund, but at all, you know, we're, our capital program, which, I mean, you'll see it on the assembly, we're asking for clean water loan money for every year we spend and have budget for about anywhere from thirty to sixty million dollars of capital upgrades on an annual basis for the combined utility. So, and Asplund's always part of that. So our facilities are regularly getting upgrades. So they're very, you know, it depends on what you mean by shovel-ready, but we've gone through this roller coaster before on what, I think Obama also did that during his administration in shovel-ready projects, and we met the criteria. It's always a scramble, but we can certainly make that happen. I don't know if, I can't think of any specific projects for Asplund, but if that, if that comes back to the table, you bet we'll be looking, we'll look into the drawing board.
Well, here, let me give you an example. So one of the justifications for potentially doing waste to energy was because of how sort of old and, you know, getting towards the end of its useful life, you know, the incinerator was. Could an incinerator, and I understand that's tens of millions of dollars to repair, to replace, right?
That's, okay, great. You know what? Good question, Forrest. Thank you for asking that. So the answer to your question, that is, that would be one of the highest priority projects for several reasons. Yes. So our incinerator is, it was last, it's forty, darn near thirty-five, forty years old, and the life of these things is supposed to be about twenty. We've continued to tweak and reinvest in it, but it's at the end of its useful life, you know. So we do need to come up with a solution, and we need to get, working with solid waste on that solution because they have a really good option. And, but here's, and I got to be very frank, because this is, this is hot on Congress right now. This gets back in these PFAS regulations, which are not inked yet, but they're getting close. And what happens with PFAS is really the only way, because EPA has a guidance document out there right now, this is the only way to take care of PFAS and destroy it, really, is thermal treatment. You know, you got to destroy these compounds, these carbon fluorine compounds, and it's very difficult to do. And I don't want to spend, you're right, our incinerator and incinerator place would be on the order of nearly a hundred million dollars. Solid waste, if we, you know, they can get about twenty times more capacity for about four times the cost. There's a huge economy scale. But we're kind of both waiting and making sure these regulations are legitimate because neither one of us wants to spend either a hundred million or four hundred million dollars and find out you still are missing the regulatory target of being able to destroy PFAS, which is a really, really big problem. So we're paying very close attention to what DC is doing because we need these regulations to be figured out so we can plan ahead. Because you're right, they are, while they could be shovel-ready, I don't want, even if it's shovel-ready, if it's not going to solve our problem, I'm a little leery to spend a lot of money on it.
That, that's fair. I would say, yeah, I mean, that's certainly a concern. I guess I would urge to not let perfect be the enemy of the good when it comes to us asking for major investments in Anchorage from a federal infrastructure bill.
Oh, we're going to ask. If that's what you're alluding to, you know, you better bet we're going to ask for that, Forrest. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Weddleton.
Well, thanks. So I've got two, and one is on this chart that you put back up. So why would our BOD percent drop so much? You have the kind of that middle section where it does a big dip.
Well, again, that was back in two thousand and five. That's a good question. You know, I'll tell you, okay, different waste streams we've collected, whether, so here's the trick on that. You got to look at our BOD sources. You know, one of the more challenging things we do remove, I'm going to pick on solid waste again, is landfill leachate. It has some of the highest concentration of BOD, and it's a, it's a non, it's a soluble BOD. In other words, TSS removes a lot of BOD in its own right, but it's the non-soluble BOD. If we, if, if leachate concentrations or volumes change over certain timeframes, which they do, then our BOD limits are going to change. Likewise, J-Bear adds different waste streams. It really gets into, depends on what we've seen over the years, and maybe we were operating one less clarifier. So here's the thing, remember, we're sized for a much larger capacity. One of the ways we can treat so well is because we've got more clarifiers than we really need. We use that, but if we run only three clarifiers instead of the five we normally run, then our limits, both on TSS and BOD, should go down, even though you're not necessarily seeing that. But just changes like that, John, I can't give it a specific reason why I wasn't here for, but you know, those are the types of things that can impact that.
Okay. And if I ask another, so, Matsu, if they're dumping into inlet as well, would EPA look at the combined impact and perhaps we'd have to face, you know, the secondary treatment because of what goes on in Matsu? Are they dumping into the inlet as well?
Well, remember the Matsu, the only place in the Matsu that have treatment, public-owned treatment works is Palmer's got a very small one for just the downtown Palmer area, and they discharge in the Kinnick River, I believe. And then Wassila has one, and I think they do groundwater discharge for a very small section of downtown. Everywhere else in the Matsus is onsite while in septic, particularly septic, and we take all those waste streams through the septic stations, through the borough as well. Now, if EPA ever said that that's, well, the biggest concern with any septic isn't necessarily domestic septic, but I've always told the borough is, is really it's landfill leachate. Toxicity is one of the things we have to meet. And landfill leachate is the most toxic stuff out there, which is another reason why I'm working with solid waste to find a different solution to get it out of Asplund, because that'll help free up our permit quite a bit. But getting back to your question about the borough, yeah. If the EPA said you can't take waste streams from out of your municipal boundaries, guess what, borough? Find a different solution, because we're not taking it, because it would jeopardize our permit.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Correntino. I do not see any additional questions. Last call for any additional questions. This was full of information, and I believe it's on the committee's website if you want to, and was emailed to members if you want to dig in a little bit deeper. All right. No additional questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Correntino. All right. Moving on in the agenda, I don't have any other business before us at the moment. So the next, and item four on the agenda, committee legislative and budget priorities and other standing items starts with a SWU, SWU update. And is there someone who is going to provide an update?
Unless Jason wants to do it, I'm happy to do that, and I might pull Mr. Shimshammer in as well if he's on.
I'm on.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to pass the baton to you. Unless Jason's on and he wants to do it. If not, Shimshammer, you're up.
Dave, thank you, Mark. This is Mark Shimshammer, Director of Engineering at AWU, and it's in this division that the stormwater utility Phase Two project is being executed. So I have a brief update, probably about three minutes worth, as to our current status of where things sit. The Stormwater Advisory Committee that the Assembly stood up is, is running fairly well. They have a monthly meeting that they just had, their first meeting of this year was the other day. Do expect that they are, that they are going to probably send a letter to the Assembly where they're going to ask for several things. One is that they would like to better define their roles and responsibilities in this project, and that's always been a sticking point with them. They would also like to decrease the number of commissioners from ten to nine. They don't like the even number in case of a vote that ends up in a tie. I find this to be an unlikely scenario, but they have a concern about it. They also have a concern about staffing the commission at its full level, since it's not been staffed at its full level. It's got two current openings. Now, I do understand that there are multiple applicants out there to fill these seats, and I've seen some of these applicants. They're all high-quality. I don't think there is a problem in filling seats if necessary, so I wouldn't advise that that become one of your considerations necessarily. But depending on what the letter says and the justifications in the will of the Assembly, we'll see how that moves forward. With regards to the AWU stand-up contract, that is over at the purchasing department right now, ready for execution. There was a minor delay due to some legal indemnification issues that the two parties had to work out. That's been worked through. COVID always throws a wrinkle into these things. We have a large outreach program planned. And everyone, if somebody could tell me the day that we can actually have a face-to-face meeting, that would be great, but I suspect no one can at this point. So we have to come up with the contingencies of no travel and COVID impacts for the next six months, and then work our way through any possible scenarios of vaccinations, what have you. And so we're, of course, making that up as we go, but we did adjust the contract language accordingly. Again, that contract should be executed here shortly. Another activity that we've done is we, of course, we had to stand up the project team here at AWU. We have a project manager assigned to it. I'm not the project manager on the project. We have a, I run the division that has all our project managers. We had to set up our team. We've done that. Our team has reviewed the work and gotten, you know, quote, "up to speed," so to speak, and has got their, got their head around the whole matter. So we're off and running in that respect. There's another committee that we are standing up to do, to assist in this work. The advisory committee that the Assembly put together, heard the Assembly ordinances, has certain roles and responsibilities and represents the community and their, the community's input into the process and what they would recommend to the Assembly. I think we've talked about the decisional document that we all expect to see here at the end of Phase Two, and I expect to see the advisory commission weigh in on that. However, on a nuts and bolts, day-to-day activity level, we have put together a technical review committee, which is distinct from the skill set that you've got on that, on that, the advisory commission. It's a five-member volunteer group, and this is put together at the urging of the contractor, and it represents, I'll lay it out for you. We, we wanted some executive-level MOA people, and we chose, or got a volunteer out of Brett Jokla, the former general manager of AWU. We wanted people who understood the pollution discharge elimination system and the stormwater system and the MS Four permit. Those are very unique specialities. So Kristi Bishop Berger is going to be the representative on that for Ken Colehaze. We wanted to talk to, get MOA, street maintenance and stormwater maintenance. The people actually do the work. We wanted to hear from them. So we got Paul Van Landingham as the delegate for Allen. So we're going to get, you know, nuts and bolts people working on this, the hands on the ground, the boots on the ground. We also are fortunate to get a representative of the DOT, the State DOT, Jim Ammison is going to participate. He was involved with Phase One, although he delegated his responsibilities there. I don't think he's going to delegate this. My understanding is, in talking to him, that he's actually going to be a full personal participant. He has a level of authority in the DOT that would be really helpful in working through the MOA-DOT coordination issues. And the last person that we've got on here is Maury Robinson, chosen for his insights and expertise with regards to the Lursa Road Service areas on the hillside. He is the point of contact for, among other things, all the Lursa contracts, and he has a long career and a good working understanding. So this is a small group of technical experts that can assist AWU and the contractor here in the near term do, like I said, the nuts and bolts that we need to do. When the contract is executed, as I say, it's taken a little bit longer than expected, but it should happen within the next week or two. We're going to, job one is to put together a detailed schedule, which we'll be able to share with, with this work group in, in the future. I can't say exactly if it'll be ready in a month's time or not, but we'd like to have a detailed schedule. And closing out here, we'll talk about the budget real quick. The burn rate on this project has been very light, so to speak. This project was originally funded with about a million and a half dollar loan appropriation. I don't quite know how much of that we have left, but I suspect we probably have ninety-eight percent of it. We have not really burned too much money. However, do expect that as this project gets off, as the contractor is under contract, as, as we start to engage the public, burn rates will obviously go up. And we'll keep you posted on, on the budgetary status here, but as of now, we've got quite a light touch on the burn rate. That's really what I've got for you, unless there's any questions.
Thank you for that comprehensive update. Mr. Constant.
Yeah, thank you. Mark, when do you anticipate the commission is going to send us communication detailing out what you, their recommendations are?
Mr. Constant, very, very good question. It has a lot, you've just gone straight to the heart of some of the commission's question of what is their responsibility? Do they want to send you a monthly report? Is it a one-shot deal at the end of Phase Two? I suspect, and I'll talk to the commissioners about this, but they're a pretty autonomous group, by the way, a very high-quality group of autonomous individuals. They're looking for, almost for you to tell them what you would like to see of the commission. Now, we're going to obviously intercede here, and I come up with what I would think would be interim updates from your, from your advisory commission to you at the Assembly. Obviously, I think it's their primary point of contact will be at the end of Phase Two when there's a decisional document created, and you would want to know from your advisory group, what do we do with this decisional document?
You know, Mark, that, you, in your testimony, referenced a series of proposed changes like nine members versus ten members, specifics on roles, et cetera. You referenced that they would be sharing with us that information. So rather than the big picture, what's the small picture answer? When will we be hearing on their recommended structural changes so they can actually do their work?
I expect you will see that within the next several weeks. I did expect them to do this previously. I don't control their schedule, but I understand that they are, they are in the next several weeks.
So our next meeting of this committee is on the eighteenth of February. If they are able to communicate that to us, by then it would be helpful.
I will pass that along, and I expect them to be able to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, the big picture, we can work out later. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the SWU update? All right. Next is legislative priorities. I don't have anything in the queue. However, Mr. Constant raised a good point yesterday at the Committee on Homelessness meeting that we should make sure we're checking in with the legislature as we, as they are convening and with the legislative priorities we've set forward. So it's a good reminder there. And any budget items for two thousand and twenty-two? Okay. Hearing nothing. We'll turn to audience participation. If you are on the phone and would like to participate, it's star six to unmute. Just a moment. You'll have three minutes. If you please state your name at the beginning of your participation. Please go ahead.
My name's Duncan Carl-Haverman. I'd like to remind the Assembly members present, it was like roughly one or two meetings ago, you had a public hearing on proposed rates, both on sewer and water. And then you would, and you approved it in direct, get over to the regulatory to get approval on those rates. Now, at that, at that meeting, during the hearing, I raised concern, and I brought out that one billion-dollar liability that sells, that continues to sell to be addressed tonight. Today's the first time I really witnessed any real addressing that one billion-dollar liability, because permit, as I said, that's been allowed by the feds over the years was something that needed to realize that that was a temporary situation that was going on for many, many, many decades. In your presentation today, you are being notified that there, there are a few communities that have set the permit. that have set the permit. And I warned you also now is that the administration has changed in Washington. I guess EPA is going to be reacting differently, and also recognize that what you do in Anchorage and how you handle the waves affects the community below in the South Central community. And I do, do not condone the way the massive boroughs have been handling their septic situation, but I have witnessed in meetings, because I attend both parties, a scenario where Anchorage's reaction has been to go to the borough and says, you need to stop giving us the waste, and that way, in in reality, is to get that permit that you got to last a little bit longer. But lasting a little bit longer is something now, the face reality is, over the years, we've had a lot of resources, Fed money and surplus money in the state, and that was the time to deal with addressing these issues. And now we're in a state budget crisis, and you can't put this thing off, not only just because you're saying you don't have money, but this is a health issue, it's a safety issue, and the longer it's been put off and not addressed properly, and spoken against exactly what's going on was was not complete with what was said today, today's meeting, and the option, then you're more likely going to find out that it's going to be more painful in the future, and for all of us in Alaska, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Would anyone else like to participate? Okay, I am seeing and hearing no one. I did put in the chat, Mr. Spafford, I saw your camera pop on, did you have something for us that I missed? If you're still there.
No, I was just making sure that Mr. Correntino didn't throw me under the bus too much. That's all.
Got it. Okay, all right. With that, that concludes our meeting, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you, Meg.
Thank you.